Welcome to your Village of Woodbury Planning Board meeting. I ask that you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hand over heart, I-
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take your seats. All right, before we get started with regular business tonight, I would just like to thank Rich Catagio for his years of service to the Planning Board, and welcome Chris CJ Graziano to the deis. First item on the agenda, acceptance of minutes. Has the board had a chance to review the minutes from April 17?
Yes.
I'll offer a motion to accept those minutes as provided.
A second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're gonna just play a little Jenga, not Jenga, but a little Shake-a-rou here with the agenda tonight. Uh, first item, Homewood Suites. Uh, completeness review for DEIS for proposed 97-room hotel, including amenities such as an indoor pool, small reading room, exercise, limited dining lobby slash lounge, and an outdoor courtyard on three parcels with a combined acreage of 3.23 plus or minus acres, known as the section 226, Lot 1, Lot 6.17 and 8 on the Village of Woodbury tax maps. The property is located in the LC and the HO district. Good evening.
Good evening.
No, we took care of that. How are you, sir?
I'm good. Steve Esposito, Engineering Properties for Homewood Suites.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, we have a couple of reports from the consultants. They are quite lengthy with comments as far as the DEIS that has been submitted. I believe you've been-
We've received copies of them, yes.
Okay. Does the board have any other feedback to provide?
No.
Um, yes.
Go ahead, is your mic on?
No. Uh, yes, I do. Um, just wanna bring your attention to under Chapter 38, Infrastructure Existing Conditions Water Supply. The numbers in there, I don't know where they came from, but they're completely incorrect. So they would have to be updated. Um, the village does not have a capacity of 1.2 MGD for new development. That's the entire capacity of the village. That's not for new development. So that has to be redone. That's completely, and also this next section after that, the wastewater is also off by numbers. So, um, you guys should go back and check those numbers and redo them.
Coordinate with the Sewer and Water Department.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, anything else from the board? Anything else? Yeah, no? All right, so at this time, I'm gonna offer a motion to deem the DEIS incomplete republically.
Second.
Questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you when you're done.
I gotta win more.
Oh, that's right. Sorry about that, Steve.
That's all right.
It's been a while.
It has been a while.
All right, so Woodbury Village Guard House. Review draft resolution for amended site plan for proposed virtual guardhouse at entrances on Central Valley Line and Stanton Fairway in Central Valley. Said property is known on the Village of Woodbury tax map, Section 254, Block 1, Lot 25.22, 255, Block 1, Lot 97. So, just give me a second to get the... You got a copy, right, Steve?
Yes.
You want me to read that?
No.
Just to accept it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so the first order of business will be to accept the draft supplemental finding statement that was submitted by the applicant and circulated by council. So I'll offer a motion to accept that.
I will second.
Any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's the easy part. All right, so we do have in front of us a draft resolution of approval given to us by council. Termination was made on June... That was on Secra. That we are not... The applicant is... So they are exempt from the moratorium due to exemption number 11. And then, of course, we have several pages of facts and findings, and then we get into our specific conditions. All obligations of the applicant under its 2005 finding statements, 2024 supplemental finding statements, 2006 final subdivision site plan and special permit approval, and all amended from time to time, and the associated developers agreements, and all the conditions of such finding statements, approvals and agreements, including but not limited to all bonding obligations, shall remain in full force and effect and are incorporated into this resolution as though specifically set forth at length herein, except as specifically modified as a result of this approval and/or revised plans submitted in connection here within. Prior to the signing of the plans, the applicant shall comply with memorandum of the village engineer dated May 31, 2024, and revise the plans as needed to the satisfaction of the village engineer. All new planting shown on the plans or as required or authorized by this resolution of approval shall be planted in a timely manner consistent with planting seasons and maintained in a healthy and vibrant condition in perpetuity. In the event of a power outage or internet outage, the developer's gate shall default to the open position to allow access and shall be remotely closed upon restoration of power and/or internet. Internal security shall be provided at both gates 24 hours a day, seven days a week, including holidays via virtual security. Residents of development shall be able to gain access through both gates via radio frequency, magnetic card, license plate verification via video feed, or some other similar form of residency verification. Prior to the issuance of a CO, emergency service shall continue to have access to the development through use of siren activated or sticker activated gates to the satisfaction of the ESOs. No security plan was submitted to the Planning Board, Building Department, and/or Police Department in conjunction with development as required by the finding statements. If issues arise relating to accessing development by ESOs, the project sponsor shall be required to return to the Planning Board for review and approval of the security plan. Virtual security guards will manage and direct access for delivery and non-resident vehicles. The virtual guard will verify the identity of the visitor, record the visitor's information, and either grant or deny access to the site. The virtual guard will provide directions and instructions on parking regulations as needed. This approval is additionally conditioned upon the applicant delivering, prior to the issuance of any building permit, proof that a copy of the final approved plans have been filed with the Orange County Department of Public Works, or proof that such filing is not required. Emergency access gates, Haley Farm Road, will not be monitored by virtual security booths. Access through those gates will be granted via security activation or lock and key, sorry, siren activation or lock and key. Parking will be enforced by in-person physical security officers patrolling the site. During the hours of peak activity, there will be in-person patrols traversing the site for additional security. The Woodbury Police Department is not required to provide patrols through construction sites or enforce traffic regulations on private roads within the gated community. The Police Department, at its discretion, is authorized to enforce parking and traffic regulations as provided by law on this site. The OHOA shall provide traffic enforcement policies for traffic control and emergency access. The OHOA shall be responsible for internally monitoring traffic controls, including speed limit compliance, parking and snow removal, to facilitate emergency access. Questions? Okay. I will offer a motion to accept the draft resolution as read.
A second.
Second. And any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now have a good night. All right, CVPM ARB signage. Review draft resolution for proposed signage on commercial and residential buildings, located at 250 and 260 Route 32 in Central Valley. Said property is known on the Village of Woodbury tax map, Section 230, Block 7, Lot 17.2. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So we're here tonight just to get your final review of the sign plan that we submitted. Excuse me?
Could we have your name, please?
Oh, excuse me, Paul Baum, I'm an attorney for the applicant.
Thank you.
So, uh, we've met on this, we've submitted our revised plan. It has the colors that the board requested. I've seen their draft resolution that Ms. Naughton shared with me. We're okay with that last revised draft. And we would just ask the board to approve the resolution and give us our approvals for the signs.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant?
Nope.
Natalie?
Um, we did issue... Oh, sorry. Okay, can you hear me now? Yes, okay. Uh, we did issue a memorandum on Friday. Uh, we had one small plan revision that we had requested the applicant indicate compliance with the code requirements for sign illumination. The plans that we received today address that concern, so we have nothing further on this and believe that the resolution is circulated by council is ready for action.
Questions for Natalie?
No.
No? Okay. Let's go. Sorry to get the resolution here. Okay, so, again, we get into several pages of facts and findings, and we get to our specific resolutions. All conditions of prior approvals in connection with this property shall continue to be in full force and effect, and this resolution does not supersede or otherwise modify such prior approvals and conditions except as specifically set forth in this resolution. No building permit shall be issued authorizing construction of structures inconsistent with architectural renderings submitted to and approved by the Architecture Review Board as part of this approval, nor shall any COs issue for any structures constructed accepting conformance with such renderings. Any deviation from such renderings will require further planning board review. Prior to the signing of the renderings, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the village engineer dated May 31, 2024, to the satisfaction of the village engineer. The size of all current and future tenant signs shall be a maximum of 16 square feet and project no more than six inches off the building facade in front and rear of the buildings. Future current tenants shall have a maximum of two fonts, exclusive of logos, and a maximum of four colors. Each sign shall contain only those colors approved in this resolution, or the applicant shall return to the Planning Board for amended approval. Approval. Each tenant existing in future desiring to have a sign shall be required to apply for and obtain its own sign permit from the Building Department. Existing tenants that have signs and do not comply with plans approved herein shall remove said signs within 90 days from the date of rendering in connection with this second amended resolution and signed by the chairman. External illumination of signs shall comply with Village Code 31030-D3 and shall be turned off no later than midnight each night. The font and color of the suite numbers for each mixed-use unit shall be the same and shall be located on the inactive left door panel. That was strict. All window signs are permitted to remain pending signs comply with Village Code 310 Attachment 11. Requirement that window signage be limited to 20% of the total window area. I'll offer a motion to accept the resolution as read.
Number nine.
No, there's an amendment, sorry.
Okay.
Nine, yeah, sorry. It came in late this afternoon.
Okay.
The two conditions were similar, so we merged them and clarified.
Okay.
Kelly did her wordsmithing.
That sounds good.
So, uh-
I will second.
Second. Questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night, Kelly.
Have a good night. Rushmore Estates. Review draft resolution for amended site plan, special permit for proposed event venue. Said property is located at 14 Castleton Road in Highland Mills. It is known as the Village of Woodbury tax map, Section 202, Block 1, Lot 70. Good evening.
Good evening. George Lithgow, on behalf of Rushmore Estate LLC. The applicant, Larry Turo, the project engineer, unfortunately could not be here tonight, but he did review the H2M memo from, I believe, last Friday, and takes no exception.
Madam? Sorry, questions for the applicant?
Okay. Um, I had just a small amount of follow-up from the last meeting, so I think there was a discussion at the last meeting that the board was gonna plan on meeting with the fire chief to flush out some of their final comments regarding a muster point on the site in the event of an emergency, as well as a way to manage pedestrians from picking up their cars and exiting the site during an emergency that may interfere with the ESOS' access to the emergency event. So if that discussion did happen, then we had suggested that those actions be memorialized as a condition in your resolution. Otherwise, we made suggestions in our memo on, you know, the applicant should show where the muster point is on the plans and provide a gate for the valet parking area, essentially, that would be locked and closed in the event of an emergency so that pedestrians or, you know, people, attendees to the event couldn't leave while the event was, the emergency was going on and interfere with the ESOS. So if the board is okay with those two suggested revisions, then we'll make sure that that happens as part of the plan signing process. So just looking for feedback from the board on that issue. Otherwise, the only thing is we had circulated the projected water and sewer demand form. There were some revisions on that for consistency with the village board's action. The applicant received a waiver under the moratorium. So that is, has been revised. We circulated it to Mickey. I spoke with him today. He takes no exception. It just hasn't been executed yet. That's all I have.
And then, we did have the initial meeting, or a couple of meetings with the ESOS. They never came back with any additional feedback or comments as far as muster points or anything like that, so-
Okay.
I don't think the board will take exception to your suggestions.
Okay, so we'll work with the applicant on those revisions to the plan prior to signature.
Yep.
Good.
Questions for Natalie?
No.
No?
No.
All right, I do apologize to the board. Again, this was another, you know, a couple of last-minute revisions to this resolution, so what I'm reading may not be 100% what everybody has in front of them. All right, so again, to confirm what Natalie said, this applicant did receive on April 25, 2024, a... Nope. Yeah, the exception, yes, the exception from the moratorium on that date. Sorry. The red lines and every, it's a little busy. Yeah, can you?
So there are a couple of changes for the board on page four, where we discussed the findings. In the finding regarding ARB, related specifically for this application, we did note that it was for temporary structures, that is, the tents and the portable restrooms. And then the second part is that as part of your decision-making, you have to verify that there were no outstanding violations on the property, which would preclude their decision, your decision, on this application. So when we followed up, there were actually two. Obviously, everybody knows of the one. That is what brought this project to this board, so that violation is not gonna preclude you taking action. There had been a second one with some outstanding fill, but as of today, that has been closed out by the Building Department. So right now, there are no outstanding violations that preclude your decision. I have included a footnote that wasn't there before saying that a notice of violation of zoning in order to cease same was issued to the applicant on October 7, 2021, related to the use of the property as an event venue. The applicant has since been operating pursuant to a consent agreement with the village, as extended from time to time, while pursuing revisions to the text of the zoning code and subsequently this conditional approval. This notice of violation does not preclude the Planning Board's decision on this application. Thanks. All right, it wasn't as short as I was hoping.
It's okay. Better than I would've done.
I get paid by the word, right?
I thought it was the letter.
Oh.
Or the staples.
That'd be nice.
Questions for Kelly about the modifications in the finding statement?
No.
All right, so after the finding statements, we get into the specific conditions. I apologize to everybody now. This one goes on for a little... Goes on for a little bit.
Goes on for a little bit.
There's a lot of them.
There's a lot of typing. All right, so, "All conditions of prior approvals and conduction in connection with this property shall continue to be in full force and effect, and this resolution does not supersede or otherwise modify such prior approvals and conditions except as specifically set forth in this resolution. In the event the property is either sold or otherwise transferred, the temporary special permit issued herein will become null and void, see Village Code 310-39.6O. In compliance with waiver granted by the Village Board of Trustees, the applicant is limited to 24 events per year until the moratorium for water supply is lifted. Until such time as the moratorium is ceased, the applicant shall report all scheduled events to the Building Department for tracking. The number of permitted events is not exceeded. No building permits shall be issued authorizing the construction or renovation of the temporary structures, i.e. tents and portable restrooms, inconsistent with the architectural rendering submitted to and approved by the Architecture Review Board as part of this approval, nor shall any certificate of occupancy be issued for any such structures constructed except in conformance with such renderings. Any deviations from such renderings will require further planning board review. All areas surrounding the dumpsters shall be kept in neat and orderly condition. No new lighting is approved as part of this action. Any new site lighting shall be designed with non-glare fixtures, which provide internal shielding to eliminate off-site glare and to limit the foot candle level at the site perimeter to .1 foot candles. All fixtures shall meet IDA, LED, or Green Globes criteria for nighttime friendly or dark sky lighting. Exterior lighting shall be shielded so not to directly shine onto adjoining residential properties. No flashing, traveling, animated, or intermittent lighting shall be visible from the property lines. Future new and/or replacement bulbs shall be energy-efficient LEDs. When an event is not in place, lighting shall be limited to only the needed for operations of the existing uses. Portable sanitary facilities shall be rented from licensed and certified suppliers for events with more than 99 attendees. Events shall commence no earlier than 10:00 a.m. and shall terminate no later than 11:00 p.m. Setup and dismantling hours shall be limited to 8:00 a.m. and 12:00 a.m." Shouldn't that be limited to eight, between eight and 12?
Eight and 12 what?
Okay, eight through 12, not eight. I read that.
Okay. Between eight.
Eight and...
I can put eight through.
Okay. Uh, number of event attendees shall not exceed 199 as permitted by the code. Prior to the issuance of a building permit applied to the event venue, the applicant shall demonstrate that the proposed spaces meets all safety requirements for the New York State Fire and Building Codes, as well as ADA requirements to the satisfaction of the building inspector. This approval is additionally conditioned upon the applicant delivering prior to the issuance of any building permit, proof that a copy of the final approved plans have been filed with the Orange County Department of Public Works, or proof that such filing is not required. Secondary ESO access, as shown on plans, shall be maintained year-round. The ingress and egress for the property, including the secondary entrance, shall be constructed and maintained to the Fire Department's satisfaction, including but not limited to snow removal and pothole repairs. The applicant shall comply with the event management plan and traffic management plan as approved by the Planning Board. Prior to the signing of the plans, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the village engineer dated May 31, 2024, to the satisfaction of the village engineer. Comply with the memorandum of the village engineer dated February 15, 2024, to the satisfaction of the village engineer.
Traffic engineer.
Sorry, village traffic engineer. Thank you. The applicant shall submit a revised traffic management plan to address the comments of the Fire Department, which are dated March 6, 2024. Confirmation revisions are satisfactory to the Fire Department as required prior to plan signing. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall provide a public safety plan to the satisfaction and approval of the code enforcement officer. The plan shall address the elements set forth in Village Code 310-39.6I-1-10. The plan shall be reviewed annually by the applicant, emergency services, and the code enforcement officer, and updated as necessary. Required all buildings and/or structures that will be utilized in connection with the event venue or undergo, will undergo a full uniform Code of New York State evaluation. This evaluation shall be performed by an engineer or design professional identifying all Uniform Code of New York State deficiencies, if any. If deficiencies are identified, the applicant shall be required to obtain a building permit and complete the work necessary to comply with the Uniform Code prior to the issuance of certificates of occupancy, or shall provide proof to the Building Department of a variance from New York State permitting the event venue to operate without being in strict compliance with the Uniform Code. All buildings and instructors, including tents to be used as part of the event venue, shall, where required, obtain a certificate of occupancy and their intended uses, for their intended uses, which shall specify the length of time the temporary structure shall be permitted. Prior to the issuance, prior to each event taking place, proof of all required insurances and permits shall be provided to the Building Department for catering and/or all alcoholic beverages proposed to be consumed on-site. All temporary structures and/or tents shall comply with Chapter 31 of the New York State Fire Code, as amended from time to time, and must be inspected by the code enforcement officer. Temporary structures that are in excess of 1,000 square feet require a permit from the code enforcement officer. A permit must be obtained for any tent or membrane structure in excess of 200 square feet, and any canopy that is in excess of 400 square feet. And a permit shall be required for any tent, canopy, or membrane structure where cooking is performed within the tent regardless of size. See Village Code 310-39.6L3A. Any questions?
Can you repeat that?
Sure, where do you want me to start? I'll do it in Latin in reverse now. I'll offer a motion to accept the draft resolution of approval. Second. Questions?
No.
All in favor? Aye.
I'm gonna abstain from this one.
Okay, so one abstention.
Thank you. The applicant thanked you, he's recuperating.
Wish him, we wish him well from his surgery. All right. Now, I presume the rest of everybody is here for it tonight?
Well, if they're still awake. I said if they're still awake.
Yeah. Oh, come on, we're doing pretty good. Woodbury Commons Phase 5 Public Hearing for Phase 5 Draft Environmental Impact Statement, as well as Site Plan Special Permit and Architecture Review Board Application. Improvements include the construction of retail space, tenant storage, a hotel, a parking desk, a helipad, infill of existing retail space, and related improvements. This property contains 142.2 plus or minus acres, and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax map, and is known as the known, and is known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 225 Block 1, Lot 70.2, and Section 226 Block 1, Lot 1. The properties are located within the LC, IB, LIO, and HO.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members and board professionals. Took us quite a bit to get to this point. Jennifer Canerick from Price Mees, Schulman, and Diarmuid on behalf of the applicant. Alvin Rogers for the project, which is commonly known as Woodbury Common Phase 5. As the board is aware, and as you, the chairman has mentioned, we're here for a public hearing on the Phase 5 Draft Environmental Impact Statement, which we finalized back on May 17th, as well as Site Plan Special Permit and Architecture Review Board Application. I do have with me this evening Vice President of Simon, Mr. Timothy Fox, who, before we go into the public comment, would like to do a brief PowerPoint presentation just to acclimate members of the public on the, on what is being proposed. Thank you.
I apologize in advance for my vanna whiteskill, so if I fall behind, just yell at me.
Thank you, Tim Fox with Simon Property Group for Woodbury Common Premium Outlets.
You can pull it out of the, you can pull it, let's take it out of the holder. Pull it straight up.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Now you're not hunched over either.
I appreciate your time, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. Thank you very much for hearing our project, reviewing our application. We're very excited. This has been a long time in the making, going back to 2018, so I think there's some familiarity here. I will run through the project. Mr. Chairman, are you controlling the?
I am. That's why I apologize for my vanna white already, because...
All right, well, I'll try to, I'll try to give you the cues, but hopefully we'll, we'll go through this. So, I know many of you are quite familiar with the property, so just a couple notes here. As the chairman mentioned, 150 acres, 250 retail and restaurant locations on the property, 912,000 square feet of leasable area. And, you know, millions of visitors, over half of which are tourists, both foreign and domestic. One, one note I wanted to really underline was that at the peak season, the property collectively employs over 5,000 people, which I believe is the largest employer collectively in the county. And, we can go to the next slide. The, the property is really, it's an economic engine, and it generates significant tax revenue. For first and foremost, the property taxes, which are paid both to the school district, the county, the village, the town, and their recipients of over $15.5 million annually. What's not quantified here is, is the significant retail sales tax, which is over $70 million annually. So, the property is really, it's, it's a, it's a tax generating machine. Oh, skip, if you go back one second, this is our, our beautiful, the next slide should be...
This one?
Oh, yeah, you can, I'm sorry, you can go, but the part, project reasoning, just to keep this brief. Why are we doing this project? Well, we think that this is the best retail outlet in the center, in the, in the country, excuse me. And we want to make it better. And by doing so, we are, we are responding to the demand of our customers, both the shopper and the tenant. There's, there's increasing demand for, for space, despite the fact that we have 912,000 square feet of space, there's, there's more demand. We're also proposing a hotel, which we think is a unique amenity. It's highly requested, and we think it will work well in this environment. And, you know, the, this, the, the retail real estate world, it's, it's capital intensive, and you have to continue to invest, and, and we want to stay the best, and we want Woodbury Common to stay the best. And so, you know, we think that this project will take the property to another level. And it will take the property to another level, you know, economically. So, in addition to the $70 million which are generated with property taxes, and the $15.5 million which are generated in property taxes, sorry, the $70 million in retail sales tax, this pro, this project would generate approximately another $20 million annually in taxes. So, significant increase. So, this is our, our beautiful rendering. The proposed development areas in the foreground, which is the area we call the Niagara region. And then, on the right side of the screen, which is the southeast portion of the property where the hotel is proposed, and the northeast portion of the property where the parking deck is proposed. Let me go to the next one. So, these are the, the three focus areas. There's the Niagara in the left side of the, of the plan here, the hotel, which is the southeast side, and then the parking deck, which, which will support those two elements. You can keep going. This is a comparison of the existing property plan and the proposed property plan. So, the, the new elements are highlighted in yellow, which we'll get into more detail in just a minute. If you go to the next slide, this compares, as I mentioned, we've been working on this project for quite some time, dating back to 2018, and there is a plan that was submitted in 2019. I supplied packages to the board members, so the last, the last sheet in that package goes through some of the, the metrics of what has changed from the plan, so if you want to refer to the very last sheet. Specifically, there were two hotels that were originally proposed. We've since changed to a single hotel. We've reduced the key count too, so it was originally two hotels with 240 keys, now it's a single hotel with 200 keys. We've reduced the, the leasable area by about 36,000 square feet. We've grown the storage by about 12,000 square feet. And the parking is roughly the same, it's similar, but on the previous version, there was, there were two parking areas that were proposed. One was an expansion of the existing parking deck, and now we're, we're not proposing that. That's actually the location where the hotel is going. So, this is the focus on the Niagara District, where we're proposing the new retail and tenant storage. It's about 132,000 square feet of retail and restaurant space, as well as an additional roughly 33,000 square feet of, of tenant storage space, which would go in place of there's existing surface parking in this area. So, that's where this, this would take place. And this is a rendering of the new retail on the left. The Shake Shack on the right is existing, so you're kind of looking southwest towards the new retail. The hotel, as I mentioned, we think is going to be a great addition to the property, 200 keys. This is an initiative that we've executed successfully across the country, incorporating hotel uses to retail properties, and we think that, you know, Woodbury Common Premium Outlets is a perfect place for this hotel. You know, it's going to satisfy that demand. As I said, you know, over 50% of the shoppers here are tourists, both foreign and domestic, and we think that this will be a nice amenity for those, for those folks. Rendering of the proposed hotel. And then the parking deck, which supports the new retail, the new storage, and the new hotel. And it helps to satisfy some of the surface parking, which would be displaced from the proposed development. And just a note on the proposed development, it, it's, that would go into the area that's, it's entirely existing within the developed area. So, there's no disruption to Peckman's Pond, the cemetery, or any of the adjacent areas. This is all area that's currently developed, so we're really kind of, we're, we're moving some of the surface parking, adding retail and storage into that area. The hotel also goes in existing surface parking, and then adding the... There's an overall addition of about 1,300 parking spaces in the new development. This is a rendering of the beautiful, this is like the nicest parking deck that I think I've proposed. I'm, just go back. What, one, and I'll go real quick here. One of the, the driving influences of our design was a focus on accessibility, both pedestrian and vehicular. And we feel like some of the changes that we've made from the old plan to the new plan reflect those changes. So, we've kind of consolidated the retail and the parking. We've right-sized to maximize the egress and ingress to the site. We've tried to eliminate some of the, the areas where there's, there's pedestrian crossing and vehicular intersections. We're trying to eliminate those to the most, to the degree possible, to really focus on safety and, and the customer. We're also proposing some exciting amenities, which I think we'll get into more detail later, but you can keep going here. You know, the, the last piece of this is just to kind of underline the economic impact. And I mentioned the $20 million in additional annual taxes. So, this is kind of a breakdown of the various entities, which would be the recipients of the new tax revenue that would be created as a result. Let me get to the next slide. And in addition to the taxes, you know, the other major economic benefit is, you know, job creation. So, we predict that there's going to be over 3,000 jobs, or nearly 3,000 jobs, created both in terms of construction and operation. And we're excited that, you know, construction would, would generate over $250 million, which would benefit, you know, state and local economies. We're pleased to enjoy the support of some local elected officials, including County Executive Steve Newhouse and State Senator James Scoofus. They've submitted letters of support, which you should be receiving, and we're very pleased to receive the support of other members of the community, some of whom will be speaking tonight. We thank them for their support, and I'm just going to conclude. This is some additional information. Thank you.
Does the board have questions for the presenter?
Could you remind me what the storage is for?
Yeah, so the storage is, is for, it's for our tenant customers. So, we've, we've gotten overwhelming response from our retail and restaurant tenants. They're seeking storage because the stores are so successful, they, they need places to store their goods, and that's, that's what the purpose of the storage is.
A couple of questions. All right, first one, you said you're adding a net of about 1,300 parking spaces and 700 jobs. Are half of those parking spaces for the employees, or are you anticipating them parking somewhere else?
No, the, the, the parking, yes, you're right, there's 1,300 net additional parking spaces. And then, within the, the document, there's a breakdown on how those spaces would be allocated. In addition, yes, those, those, some of those spaces would be allocated to the employees.
Yeah, because the concern I have is, is you have a traffic corridor there that's already completely bogged down, and with the massive building in, in the general area of that place, it's only going to get worse for Woodbury residents. So, I would really like to see a much more detailed traffic kind of plan overall, looking at Route 32, and how much traffic it's going to be handling with all the development going on. The second question I have is, as I was reading through, and you have to forgive me, I'm catching up really quick, reading through all these documents. I have another concern for the village and, and its residents is, why is it necessary for a helipad or a helicopter to come into for shopping? We don't need the noise in the, in the village. I wouldn't see that being any beneficial at all to any of the residents in the village. So, I think you should really look at, if you, that's a real necessity for that place.
Okay, thank you.
Just, actually, I want to follow up on CJ's question or comment. During peak times, employees are required to park in other lots, and they are then transported via bus into the commons. Does this net parking now eliminate the fact that employees that work there are now going to have to park in Harriman Train Station and?
No, I mean, that would, that would remain during peak, peak times that the employees would be parking remotely. And then, during the construction periods, we would have some remote parking as well.
Other questions? Well, the board will still have time to comment, but anything else right now? Want to start with Dr. Phil?
Good evening, Philip Greeley, Polyus Engineering and Design. We had reviewed the draft environmental impact statement, the traffic impact study, and the correspondence from PSNS. We prepared a detailed letter dated May 31st, five-page letter with various comments. They range from comments on the site plan, clarifications for items in the traffic impact study, and recommendations in terms of what needs to be included in the FEIS, and also for consideration when you get to a finding statement and mitigation. Just a couple of quick highlights, and we think it's important to get written correspondence from New York State DOT on the application. As you all know, the interchange was reconstructed, and just, you know, the confirmation of this expansion was considered as part of their evaluation and the improvements that were done. I know that the applicant has been in contact with New York State DOT during the process, but we would like to see some correspondence. That's just a general item. In terms of traffic along the Route 32 corridor, we're asking for some additional analysis, especially as it relates to traffic along the, to the north, going into, in and out of the village. Not to get into too much technical detail, but the traffic study evaluated the expansion traffic with one distribution for both weekday and weekends. We'd like to see a separate evaluation for weekdays, because it's a different pattern, and the effect on Route 32 north of the site, we'd like to have that looked at a little bit more. A lot of the other items are relative to clarifications, bringing some additional information that's in the traffic study forward in a, in a summary fashion so that it doesn't get lost. We're recommending some monitoring locations. We need to have the input from the ESOs. I know that's been always an item that's been discussed throughout time between the common and ESOs. So, there's been a good relationship there, but we just want to make sure any of their comments and input gets folded into the plans. We have a lot of comments about the site plans, and signing, and striping, and treatments there. But again, most of these will have to be addressed in the FEIS. And we make some recommendations for items to be included in the finding statements, and mitigation measures also included in it. So, that's just a quick overview. There's five pages of comments. I think, you know, the applicant did a very detailed evaluation. Just, you know, clarifications and cursing the t's and dotting the i's in the FEIS.
So, Phil, I think one thing I'd, I'd like to see from the applicant's study, the feasibility of working with this state DOT of equipping those intersections with preemptors from Turner Road to, what is that on the, the last road on the, where the big sign is?
LoSi.
LoSi. As we know, those intersections can become bogged down, and EMS uses those to get onto the highways to get to the hospitals. So, I think it would be a good time to upgrade those intersections. I know the state would need to be involved with that, because they only have certain systems they use.
Correct.
As far as traffic northbound, will the study's taken to affect the projects that are also coming on board over there?
So, the, the DEIS included a list of several other projects. There's a, there's a numerous list in there, that were identified when the scoping document was prepared for the applicant. They also included background growth. One of our comments is, in the FEIS, we want to see an additional analysis that addresses the two hotels, the Monroe Commons. Other projects that have come on board have changed somewhat since the adopted scope. So, again, that would be addressed in the FEIS, and that's outlined in our comments.
I have, and then the follow-up regards to parking. One of the things that I hear as a resident here all the time is that during the holiday season, kids that work there, again, they have to park off-site and be bused in. Is there any way to have a breakdown of what the actual required parking would be for the employees there? Because, you know, to be honest, to me, it seems the center is catering to the customers, which I understand is important, but a lot of these people that work there, especially part-time or seasonally, are younger. And I, I don't think it's fair that if they have a job, they have to spend an additional 45 minutes commuting from a parking lot to get to their, to their job. I mean, I wouldn't do that. I wouldn't park at my job and have to commute another hour to get into where I work. So, I don't think it's fair to ask somebody that's working in a retail location that, that has to do that. The site should be able to provide enough parking for its employees, as well as its customers.
Yeah, I think the applicant has a breakdown of parking, but they can further break it down and identify the areas that would be most useful for that purpose.
Yeah, maybe one of the mitigation methods is maybe one of the levels in the parking towers become an employee-only lot. Just throwing it out there right now.
Also, how much of the parking is going to be broken up to be valet parking? Seems like, you ever go to Woodbury Common, you got to valet park, or you got to walk three miles? You know, especially for a local resident.
If you don't, if you don't valet.
If you don't valet park. Do we have an answer on how much of the parking is going to be dedicated to valet?
Not specifically. We do have areas that would be dedicated to valet parking. And, and those areas that we've identified, at least for the new development, are largely around the hotel. But, you know, specific other operational areas for valet parking, not, not at this time.
I'd sort of like to know how, how many of the available parking spots are there? How many will be dedicated to valet?
Yeah, I think that's something that would have to develop, but we don't, we don't have a specific answer for that.
Something I would like to say. Is there any loading and offloading regarding the hotel, and when that would be?
In terms of the operations? Yeah, we, we, again, we haven't, we don't have a hotel operator who's brought onto the project, but the expectation was, is be off-hours. And, you know, the plan includes the locations for, for loading, and we think that that's accessible to, you know, the, the outer ring road for that. But, you know, the expectation would be that would be off-hours. I mean, we, we would want that for our customers as well.
Again, another, two questions, and again, forgive me, I'm just catching up to all this. If this has been answered, please let me know. But, two more questions. One, in the traffic study, was the, all the new building that was put up on Ninder Road ever taken into consideration, taking this traffic? Because that's a lot of people that are going on and off the same highway, off ramps and on ramps. That'll, that's in addition to the, to the retail.
So, as part of their traffic study, they included what's referred to as Moshe Gardens, and a whole series of projects in the Village of Kirish Joel, in the town of Monroe. So, there's a whole listing there. I think one of, one of our comments was just to make sure that that list is updated based on what has transpired in the last year even. So, they did evaluate that, but it needs to be updated to make sure everything is addressed.
And the second piece is, it, it, has it been addressed now that you're planning to put a hotel there? The place is empty overnight. So, is there going to be a full-time security company brought on board? Because there's going to be cars there parked overnight next to a major highway. So, that's going to be, you know, very, you know, as, to not put a better word, but very juicy for a, you know, hit and smash and grab, or anything else like that, because being so close to a highway. So, has there been any forethought into that?
We, we have full-time security, but those operational measures would be taken to accommodate the, the hotel use.
I'm good for now? Natalie?
I'm fine.
So, we have not issued our comment letter to the board as of yet, but we will have that prepared and finalized and distributed to the applicant and the planning board prior to the close of the public comment period, the written public comment period. But we will have, obviously, threshold comments on available water and sewer capacity, helipad zoning, and compliance with regulatory agencies, and what approvals may be required. We had comments, or we will have comments, on the elimination of the parking in the Niagara Court, and the remaining accessible parking that's been left behind, and whether or not that's adequate. We have comments on the parking garage, the height calculations, as well as transportation of Phil from the project site. So, those are just a couple of high-level comments that we'll be, you know, issuing in a formal response letter, but I just wanted to let the board know that we're working on it. A lot of detail, a lot of content. So, that's all I have for the moment.
Questions for Natalie?
Not so much for Natalie, Natalie. As far as the strain on ESOs, the additional strain, I should say. I mean, we're putting up, what, a four-story hotel?
Five-story.
Five-story, and how many stories is the parking deck?
Five, five-story.
Is one-lotted truck enough? With the fire department, additional police responses. I mean, I think Woodbury Commons, if I'm not mistaken, 17% to 19% of the fire calls?
It's, so, you mind if I parlay in here?
Go right ahead, sir.
Okay, so I was going to comment that I was going to make, but, um, so, in the community section of the DEIS, it's listed to little to no impact on village or community resources. To go with, along with Tommy, last year, the fire department, 15% of the runs for the fire department were just automatic alarms in the commons itself. That doesn't include all of the traffic accidents that could be correlated to visitors coming to the center. Like every volunteer EMS and fire agency, they're strained. It's, it's a problem across the country right now. You just can't get volunteers.
You just can't get volunteers. Adding additional retail space and adding additional keys or adding hotels, it's, I would like to understand how the Commons came up with the fact that there's going to be little to no impact or strain on current village resources. I know our EMS providers are there constantly, especially on busy holiday weekends. And unfortunately, it's a 40-minute ride to a hospital from here. That's a long time being out of, of town. You've got responding, you've got taking care of the patient, and back and forth. First responders could be gone for two hours at a clip. I do speak from experience. I spent 20 years in fire and EMS on Long Island. I come from a very densely populated area in Nassau County. So I can tell, say for certain that projects like this do add to calls, and they will put an additional strain on an already strained system here. The addition of additional chargers, high-voltage chargers for EV cars. Those, those fires alone can use upwards of 30,000 gallons of water to extinguish. That's a tremendous amount of water and resources. Fighting car fires in parking decks. Typical fire apparatus isn't designed to go into a parking deck. It's just, it's too big, it's too heavy, it's too high, it's too wide. They, you know, there are apparatus that can be made to go into parking decks. It was done in Long Island when a bunch of parking decks went in. So I'd like to understand what the Commons is going to do to help, because you do, guys do have the power to help mitigate the burden that is going to be placed on both fire and EMS. And there is going to be a burden, whether you guys want to say it or not. Same thing with police. It is all over the news. Shoplifting is at an all-time high. We see places closing, going out of business, taking extreme measures. The Commons not so long ago put internal security gates in because of a bunch of smash and grabs that were going on because of the easy access on and off of the throughway. So again, I can't see how you guys can stay here or sit here and say there's going to be almost no impact on the, the resources here in the village of Woodbury. There will be. And this board was gonna want to see how you came up with, came up with that statement. When I look through the exhibits, and again, I mean, there are hundreds and hundreds of pages, so my key word, search missed it, I apologize. But I don't see anything in the exhibit showing any sort of call statistics for fire, police, or EMS. You know, Woodbury has a, a small police force. Usually it's three or four officers on it a clip. Anybody that listens to the radio, if something happens down at the Commons, all of our officers are tied up down there. So now when something happens on the other side of Woodbury, there's a delayed response. Harriman has to come in, the state police have to come in. That's a burden, and that's not fair to the village of Woodbury, and that's not fair to the residents here. So again, those are some of my comments. The helicopter, I could probably go on for days. I know it's gonna be used once a day.
Yeah.
I don't know how many people in this room have ever actually had to fight an aircraft fire or a helicopter fire. They're not easy. And it requires a lot of resources, a lot of mutual aid, and they can do a lot of damage if there's, God forbid, an accident with one of those things. So what is the plan? Because it's not listed, and I didn't see it. The DEIS keeps referring to an ESO plan, and that ESO plan really circum, really circulates around circulation within the center itself. Doesn't really address how Simon Properties is going to work with local ESOs to help mitigate the burden that's gonna be placed on them. So again, I have a few more comments. I will type them all up and submit them before the end of the public comment period, just not to belittle the meeting. But those are some things that come off my head right now. Sorry if I stole your.
Oh, it's all good, man.
Saw your thunder.
Sort of like laid it up for you.
You did. General, other comments or questions from the board before I go to Kelly and then out to the public?
No, just to, again, go back to your comments on the helicopter. You also have to understand there's three schools right across the street from the Commons also, and flying a helicopter over three schools could be a really tragic accident waiting to happen to bring shoppers in.
I would add that included in the document is the flight platters, and they're not over any of the schools.
Intentionally.
Intentionally, exactly. I mean, listen, sometimes things will happen, especially with a helicopter. You know, you got the throughway right there, you got 17 right there. Like CJ just said, you got three schools right there. For how many flights are really gonna be coming in just to cater to the less than 1% of your, your shoppers?
And I mean--
A little too much of a detriment to the community, in my opinion.
And I, and I know there was a positive spin tried to place under the DEIS with, that it'll be available to first responders to use. State Police Barracks already has a helipad that's widely used. We have St. Pat's parking lot that's been used. We have the rez that's been used. They've landed a bird right on 17 if they need to. So I mean, it's really, coming from that side, I'm not gonna, if the, I think the heli, it's, it wouldn't be a place that I would net evacuation out of. It's just gonna be too hard to get somebody in there unless, unless they're from the Commons itself. So, I mean, it was a nice spin, but I don't, I don't, I don't see it working. Sorry.
Well, the other thing to add to that--
Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
The other thing to add on the helicopter portion is the environmental portion. Obviously, it's next to the wetlands. It's, you know, yes, the throughway is there, but, you know, you're in a very, an area full of nature and everything like that, and there's a, you know, we have to consider the environmental part, both acoustically and just visually and everything like that.
Any else from the board?
Yes, one more thing.
Sure.
In the past, Metro North has talked about putting a train station, and it would be near the parking garage, the new parking garage, and bypass or come over Peckton Pond. Is there any discussion with Metro North on that at all?
There has been discussion, but that's not part of this project. We're not proposing it as part of this project.
Any else from the board? Kelly, have anything before I go? Okay. So-- What's up? Oh, bless you. Sorry. All right, so I'm gonna ask you just to take a seat for a few minutes. So this is where we're gonna open our public comment portion of the meeting. I ask that everybody be respectful, limit your comments to the board. If there's small questions we can answer, we'll do our best to answer them. You know, everybody's allowed to get up and make their comments for and against. I do, you know, but the comments should be substantive of nature. Only comments that are substantive of nature will be required to be responded to by the applicant. So simply saying, "I don't like it," doesn't really, you know, much, doesn't, isn't gonna do much, and it's not gonna get a response in the DEIS going forward. So I just asked, if you have comments, just back them up with some stuff or some, not stuff, some facts or behind it, and we'll go from there.
Substance.
Some substance. There you go. That was the word I was looking for. All right, so we'll start in the first row. When you come up, I just asked that you speak, speak, state, eh, like I've never done this before.
State your name and speak to the microphone.
Go ahead, sir. You're the only one brave enough to sit in the front row tonight.
I'm the one to sit somewhere left at that point.
Feel like I'm back in school. Nobody wants to be in front of the board.
Okay, so, good evening. My name is Patrick Cahill. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Management Services with the Monroe-Woodbury Central School District. So I'm here to represent the school district and make some comments about our relationship with the Woodbury Commons. We're well acquainted with the Woodbury Commons and Dave Mistrata, the general manager, and his team. We've worked with them over the years and collaborated and partnered with them on many projects, including clothing drives whereby the Woodbury Commons has made donations to the district. We distributed those to needy families and students, donations of school supplies from the Woodbury Commons. Woodbury Commons has provided financial support for the MW Cares Project. It was a major educational event we had at the high school several years ago. Woodbury Commons provides regular and free use of equipment, mostly portable lighting towers, which we use for events and athletic events, football, night football games, that sort of thing. Woodbury Commons staff has volunteered at our job fair at the high school, helping students with interview tips and guidance on where to find jobs. More recently, we've begun to discuss with Woodbury Commons using their facilities in the event of an emergency, either as a, an evacuation site or a reunification site. Obviously, Woodbury Commons is a, a major employer. We heard about that tonight in the area. They also employ dozens or hundreds, I don't have the exact number, of Monroe-Woodbury High School students. Currently, the existing facility provides, as we heard earlier, about $10 million, you know, give or take, because that tax rate has gone up or, it's actually gone down in Woodbury recently, the school tax rate, that is. They're one of our, either one or the largest taxpayer for the school district, and the school district goes into five towns. So Woodbury is, is one of the five towns that we go into. It's my understanding, and I do not have extensive knowledge about this, I have not read the environmental impact reports or anything, only maybe in a cursory way, but it's my understanding that the proposed project will provide an additional $2 million annually, as we just heard about, in, in property tax revenue, to the district, which represents about 1.5% of our current tax levy. And so if you think about that, we had a 1.78% increase in our levy this year. So that addition to the tax base would have nearly covered that increase in our '24, '25 school year. So in conclusion, we've had an excellent collaborative and supportive relationship with Woodbury Commons for many years. These new improvements will provide additional tax revenue to the district. We've heard about that quite a bit. Additional opportunities for employment and mentoring of our students. So thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, sir. Second row, anybody wishing to make public comments on this application? Third row? I see movement.
I see.
Okay.
Hello?
Hi.
Hello? This is intimidating. My name is Oriana Nikai. I'm a resident of the town of Monroe and also an employee at Woodbury Common. I've been working at Woodbury Common for over 15 years. I started as a part-time salesperson with Michael Kors in 2008, and now I lead a flagship store for one of the most recognizable luxury brands in the world, Bottega Veneta. My commute to work is two miles, six minutes, and I make the same salary as someone who commutes three to four hours round trip to New York City to make a living. I know this because my husband commuted for years, and he would always say with envy, "I wish I worked locally and had a short commute like you." I'm so grateful for this and consider myself so fortunate that I have Woodbury Common in my backyard. As a mom of three children who are students and athletes of the Monroe-Woodbury Schools, I have had the blessing countless times to join my children for lunch, hop in their classroom to read a story, or volunteer for a holiday party, and watch their soccer games on the fields across from my place of work, across the street during my break. This for me has been a life-changing event as a working mom to have the opportunity to work but also be present for my kids. Also, as an employee, parking is not that big of an issue besides Black Friday, where it's congested everywhere in Orange County. It takes a few more minutes to park, but that's probably like the biggest day where we, as employees, think of parking as a little bit more of an inconvenience. As a resident of Orange County, I enjoy the benefits of having lower taxes due to the large tax contribution that having Woodbury Common in our county generates. As a New Yorker and living in the tri-state area, when I travel and I want to explain to friends and family or strangers where I live, I always say, "Right by the iconic Woodbury Common," and everyone smiles and nods. I also have helped children who attend a high school right across the street from Woodbury Common, whether it's been a direct hire or finding them a position in another store. And they always rave about the convenience of being able to finish their school day and walk over to their job at Woodbury. Two out of my three kids are now in high school, and several times a week, they enjoy walking around the beautiful grounds of the Commons with their friends, having lunch at Chipotle's or catching up over a Playa Bowl or refreshing with a Starbucks drink. In our busy lives, when we can carve out time for each other, we take walks around the Commons and enjoy the beauty of the shopping center surrounded by mountains, hearing tourists from all over the world speak in tongues, and experiencing the contagious feeling of people from all over the world shopping on vacation, laughing with their families while saving a ton of money. I can genuinely say Woodbury Common has changed my life and my family's life, providing me with a local career opportunity and a lucrative salary that is rare in our area. I am proud to say I work there, and I'm grateful for the hundreds of millions of tax, in dollars in taxes they pay and the thousands of people they employ. I can't wait to see the growth and the benefits of the W- Woodbury Common expansion.
Thank you very much for your feedback.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the third row? The fourth row? Any-- Go ahead. Can arm wrestle, who goes? Rocks, paper, scissors? Anything will work.
Cage ratchet.
My name is Chris McCracken. I'm here representing Advanced Testing Company. We are a local firm based in Orange County, currently in our 40th year in business. I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I'm here to express our support for Simon Property Group's proposed Woodbury Common Phase 5 project, as well as the associated environmental impact statement, site plans, and supporting documentation that's been submitted for the board's review. As is well-known and now been covered in, in the presentation, Woodbury Common has become one of the top tourism attractions in New York State, and as such, a significant contributor to taxes, of taxes to Woodbury School District, the town and village, Orange County, and New York State as a whole. Additionally, it brings a multiplier effect by encouraging visitors to visit the surrounding area for everything from dining to entertainment to other tourism attractions to simple things like the local gas station. In an era where many shopping malls and retail establishments are struggling or have gone out of business, Woodbury Common stands as a shining success story in the industry and one that we should celebrate and welcome to stay and grow in our community. As the facility has continued to flourish and modernize, it's had implemented improved access and egress, continued to add parking for guests, added energy efficiency to the property, and improved the overall walkability and enjoyment for guests. And even recently, I was there, I inadvertently parked in the wrong area where I was not anticipating, and ended up walking around the property, and it was nice just to, to enjoy walking around. It was a pleasant place to be regardless of the retail aspect. And with all these things in mind, again, we support Simon Properties' application for the Phase 5 expansion and hope the board continues with your efficient, comprehensive review of the project's application. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Heather Bell. I am the President and CEO of the Orange County Chamber of Commerce. I am also the Chairwoman of the Chamber Alliance of New York State. What we're experiencing tonight with the expansion of Woodbury Common is a significant development, and it holds tremendous benefits for our community, our local businesses, and our regional economy. First, the expansion will spur economic growth by attracting more visitors to our area, thereby increasing retail sales and generating substantial revenue. In turn, this is going to create a plethora of jobs, both in the construction phase and in the long-term operations of the new stores and services. The influx of tourists and shoppers will also benefit our local businesses right here in the village. That's going to include your restaurants, your hotels, your entertainment venues. It's going to contribute to a more vibrant and prosperous local economy. Moreover, the expansion project will enrich our community's cultural and social impact. By attracting a diverse range of shoppers from various backgrounds, Woodbury Common will become a melting pot of cultures. It already has. We promote the cultural exchange and understanding. They do that through their special events, promotions, strides for American cancer. The activities organized by this outlet provide entertainment, leisure opportunities for families and individuals, support local business, commerce, and foster a sense of community and well-being as well as belonging. Finally, this expansion will enhance our region's competitiveness as a premier destination. With an expanded array of high-quality retail options, Woodbury Common will attract both domestic-- Finally, this expansion will enhance our region's competitiveness as a premier destination. With an expanded array of high-quality retail options, Woodbury Common will attract both domestic and continue to attract international visitors, solidifying their position on the map as a must-visit location, as well as the surrounding areas. This increased visibility will have that ripple effect, drawing attention to the other attractions and amenities in our area. In conclusion, the expansion of Woodbury Common Premium Outlet is a forward-thinking initiative that promises numerous benefits to our entire community. It's going to drive economic growth, create jobs, improve infrastructure, foster cultural enrichment, and position our region as the leading destination for shopping and leisure. As the President of the Orange County Chamber of Commerce and the Chairwoman of the Chamber Alliance of New York State, I'm excited about the bright future that this expansion holds for our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Still working on the fourth row?
Everybody try to sit far back.
Yeah. Notice the gentleman that works for the school district is the only one that sat in the front row.
I think they teach that in school, you're supposed to sit in the front row.
I think you're right.
Well, good evening, my name is Mike Oats, I'm the President and CEO of the Hudson Valley Economic Development Corporation. I want to thank you for your time and consideration on this project, one of which we are of great support of. I think you had a very good presentation earlier tonight that kind of showed the history and the impact of Woodbury Commons, and certainly the overview of the plan. I have a number of my colleagues here tonight, so I'm going to be brief, a lot of them from Orange County specifically, so I'm going to let them talk about some of the economic impacts, I don't want to steal some of their thunders, but we do want to stress, you know, the $20 million in additional tax revenue, the $250 million of spending in the construction phase, and certainly the jobs that will be created, which is obviously going to be a big impact to Orange County and the Hudson Valley region as a whole. Just a quick note, we talked about the proposed hotel and the need, we just opened up a new hotel, an extended stay hotel in Dutchess County, the Inn at Bellfield in Hyde Park, and we have folks staying in the hotel in Dutchess County that are coming, driving all the way over here to shop. So having a hotel, it's proposed, I think will obviously be a great addition to the overall project. So again, thank you for your consideration, and I'll leave it to the rest of my colleagues.
Thank you, sir. Fourth row, anybody else in the fourth row? Okay, fifth row? The row behind Mr. Mistrata.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment, I'm Greg Peckham with Peckham Industries, we're a fourth-generation family-owned business, we just met our 100th year this year, we've won history of working in Orange County, starting with most significantly probably the original paving of the Stewart Airport during World War II. You know, currently, most recently, we adopted the TETs business, which you may know more locally, but we've been operating in Windsor, and have been a strong supporter of the community for many years, and wanted to come here today to represent our business and all of our members, to help share, as a business that now spans seven states throughout the Northeast, 1,200 people, what a significant and special and unique thing you have with Woodbury Commons. You know, we heard about crime increasing in retail today, but we also read about the death of retail in our common spaces across the US, and this is such a shining success that you have in this area, really defying the odds of what we see in the rest of our country and the rest of our business with the lack of this type of infrastructure and success in a community and growth and development, and New York State is losing 2% of their population every year, but Orange County is growing, and it's because of projects like this that Orange County is able to continue to succeed and grow and be a beacon, really, of what success looks like in New York. And so we're strong supporters of this project, we believe that this is going to bring significant economic impact and help support the 100 jobs that we have here in the area, and so I'm sure we'll hear much more of the same, but thank you for the time to comment, and we hope to see this project make swift progress. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time and commitment to this project, it's incredibly important to the county. My name is Amanda Dana, I run the tourism office and film office for Orange County, thank you again. My story starts back when many colleagues were in the room, and we were complaining about some of the traffic, right? Who doesn't complain about that? And we were in a room where we had the interchange project move from 2025 to 2020, I believe, and that was a forward-thinking move because we knew that this engine, Woodbury Common and other tourism attractions along this corridor, really needed the infrastructure to support this growth. Now I travel around the state of New York and the country, and people talk about this project all the time. In fact, I was speaking with my friends from Niagara Falls, and I said, "Well, how are you doing? How are things going?" And they said, "Well, we don't have a Woodbury Common." They do say that, they say that all over the place, it's not just because of the retail, it's because of what community partners they are. I'm here to tell you that I am so supportive, and I'm so excited for the entire project. This is going to be a wonderful project, it will continue to make jobs, create jobs, as well as continue to our economic vitality of the region. I'm hoping we move this forward, and again, I have to talk a little bit about the helicopter thing, because I know there's been some talk, but I have to tell you that we get a lot of requests for helicopter accessibility. It is a way of transportation, and not just for the really, really wealthy, it'll all catch up, but it does have a safety factor as well. And one last thing, I worked in hotels early on in my career, and every time I worked in a hotel or a hospitality place, I, as an employee, on busy weekends, couldn't not park where I worked too, so it's kind of a common thing, it's not just to this property, I would love to have more parking there, but it is a common tradition for people who work in hospitality, I'm hoping you know that. Thank you for your time and all your efforts for this project.
Thank you. Still working on the fifth row.
How you doing? I'm Scott Perry, I live in Goshen, and I have a Goshen-based business, Atlas Security. We've been a business 32 years, about a dozen years ago, we were transitioning the business from New Jersey to a Hudson Valley, Orange County business, and the first toehold we got was Woodbury Commons. Where else could we go to find 150 potential clients in a few-block radius? And we were lucky, we signed up with some stores to do their security services, later we were hired by Simon to do traffic, and without that toehold, would we have been able to transition the company to Orange County? Maybe, but it definitely would have been tougher. So now it's 12 years later, we went from a small business to a mid-sized business, we had virtually, even though we lived in Orange County, we had no employees in Orange County, now we have 300. And part of that was some of the success we saw early on at Woodbury Commons, just Memorial Day weekend, we helped out with traffic, I had high school seniors working for me, I had retired military, retired corrections, a reservist from Stewart, so these are all jobs that wouldn't exist, and I wouldn't be able to offer without Woodbury Commons. So I know you have your due diligence to do, but I hope you'll see fit to approve this project, because there's a lot of small businesses that do business with each individual store, even if they don't work directly for Simon, and I hope you appreciate that. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Maureen Hallahan, and for the last 38 years, I'm the President and CEO of the Orange County Partnership, by the way, I'm sorry. For the last 38 years, the partnership has exclusively supported projects that have potential to return to the community what is invested in the project, and Woodbury Common exceeds that mark. As Orange County residents, we love Woodbury Common, not just to shop there, but we're proud of the destination that we can share to our friends, our family, when we're in conversation, or when we're in business meetings, that Woodbury Common, you know, puts us on the map. We're proud to be identified as the county that hosts the number-one tourism destination in New York State outside of New York, New York City. We love the international and domestic dollars that come in, and the sales tax that's generated, so much money that has come through that in sales tax that our county executive yesterday publicly announced once again that he's been able to reduce tax rates countywide again, because of what's generated here. Where else is this highly taxed state of New York, in this highly taxed state of New York, do you see declining tax rates? We have a lot of trouble in this state, there's a lot of problems, and this is a shining star. Woodbury Common is a leader in economic development, creating thousands of new jobs for people of all ages and backgrounds, from students, and you know this, from students that are just looking for part-time work, and they want to, and their parents want them to be safe and in a clean environment, to senior citizens wanting to supplement their income or do something extra, to diverse careers in management, loss prevention, account management, purchasing managers, human resources, et cetera, six-figure jobs, six-figure jobs and hire that we've talked about earlier, this lady talked about earlier. These jobs meet people where they're at, and take them as far as they want to go. So in addition, many local contractors will benefit from the construction activity here and the building of this project. The proposed hotel will help ensure that visitors not only spend their money here, but stay the night, and shop longer, and eat here, and tell their friends about it, and bring more people here. So it is the most gorgeous campus, I mean, it is a beautiful campus. Back in 1985, there was a lot of fighting to keep that campus from growing and building here. It was a mess, and I'm old enough to remember, so it was a big fight, and when I think about what we would look like if that was not here, like what would that be, and what would we have here to replace it? So with malls all across the country struggling, and trying to find their footing, and putting in, you know, different types of things just to save it, including housing and others, this is an opportunity to let the Common grow, and continue to be fresh and new, and bring more people in. They've invested millions in infrastructure to support it, and they're going to continue to do so, and behalf of the Orange County Partnership, we wholeheartedly support the project, and we wish you very good luck with your due diligence, I know it's a big job, but we hope that you look at the big picture. Thank you so much.
Good evening, members of the board, my name is Dan Depew, and I am the National Director of Business Development and Government Liaison for Holt Construction. At Holt, we have one phrase that we build relationships at Holt, we've been in business in this region of New York State for over 100 years. The other thing is that we build regionally significant projects, and I have to tell you, it is both of those reasons why I appear before your board tonight. I think that, I'll start with the relationship side, in our experience working with Simon Group, we have found them to be more than reasonable, we have found them to be exemplary corporate citizens in doing what they say they're going to do, and to that of the highest quality, and we often experience that in working with them. On the aspect of building regionally significant projects, you know, I think if you were to poll most people who live in the Hudson Valley and ask them, "Where is Woodbury Commons?", they might say, "It's in Orange County," they might say, "Well, obviously, it's in Woodbury itself," but could they actually specifically say that it's in the Village of Woodbury? I don't think they could, and I bring that up because in my prior life, I like to say sometimes often that I used to be Dan Depew, I was a town councilman, and a county legislator, and a town supervisor, and a deputy county manager, I have sat at a dais much like your own, in a community where I had the ultimate responsibility to make decisions for the best interests of the people who live there, but also recognize that from time to time, regionally significant projects were bigger than just my community, and I think that you also have to deal with that. And as I listened to some of the questions and comments that members of the board had to make tonight, about the draft environmental impact statement, I just want you to know, I truly appreciate what you do, and I truly appreciate some of the comments that you have, and I also firmly believe that it's folks like you that will make the project better, and that you come to these meetings really as volunteers to be able to give your time to this community, to ask questions, and I can tell you, I don't speak on behalf of Woodbury Common, but I can tell you that they do hear you, and I'm sure they'll work with you. I just believe that, I do. One of the things, you know, the funny thing, where I was supervisor in the town of Walk Hills, no one knew where that was either, they all thought it was Middletown, so I could share that with you. Malls are dying all around the country, retail has a major problem, most of us are buying things online. I swore I would never buy anything online, and I find that I buy a lot, sorry guys, I find I buy a lot online. I remember our great state Senator John Bonisek, many of you knew John, great guy, and I argued with him as shifting of retail went to online, that we need to do something about taxes being collected, because otherwise, we're not collecting those sales taxes here locally, and he argued with me, "We're already taxed enough." Shortly thereafter, he left, the change happened in the state, and they did decide to collect those taxes. I think we are realizing how much we were losing by people leaving to go buy goods and services in other places. The impact to Woodbury, that Woodbury Common makes on this community is regionally significant. The weight is on you to be able to guide this process, to get it done. I also sit on the Hudson Valley CCA Board, that's the Construction Contractors Association, and I can tell you, so many men and women have jobs in construction today, that the economy, outside of what's happening regionally, interest rates, all of these things have kind of put a stop to some of that work, and what's left, in many cases, is just government work. These projects are really vital to our local men and women and local labor, and I would ask you to do all of your due diligence, you have really tremendous professional staff here, you kind of have the best of the best, and I'm sure you rely on them, do your due diligence, make the changes to make the project great, and help us continue to construct great, regionally significant projects here in Orange County. Thank you for this time.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Anybody else in the fifth row?
Hi, good evening, everyone, my name is Adel Esperopoulos, and I actually live in Central Valley, so Oriana, I'm actually way closer than you, because I live exactly a minute and a half from Woodbury, and I could actually walk there, so even if there was traffic, it's definitely not an issue for me. But I've been working at Woodbury Common for about 20 years. I actually was a college student, and my first job was there, and I was able to do that because there was so much flexibility. If one retail didn't have the schedule that I needed, I could go to another one. And today, this is my career, and it's a very high-paying job, and I'm blessed to have that opportunity, and to be able to also spend time with my kids. One of the reasons why I support the expansion of Woodbury Common, it's of course for the many reasons that a lot of us already mentioned, but one day is dear to my heart, is the fact that the contribution that Woodbury Common gives to the school district is huge. My son, and I'm sorry if I'm going to a personal thing, my son has an IP, so he needs special programs to keep going in school. Well, as you know, the school district, many school districts have issues with funding, right? But thanks to the contributions that we got from Woodbury Common, those programs can keep going. And my-